Hello, everyone. I call the Select Board to order tonight on January 31st at 7:41 PM. Motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call. Mr. Gieto.
Here.
Mr. Vice Chair Cavie.
President.
Mr. Carrara.
Here.
And Mr. McCrisky is absent today. He's away on business, and I am here. If you're able, I ask you to stand to salute our flag. (laughing) Thank you, everyone. We'll sing the Star Spangled Banner next time.[75.06][75.06](laughing) Okay, let's see here. In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31st, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Mix. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting's transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting. If livestream broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful, times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chairman's discretion. So I have one update under Consent Agenda Item E will be withdrawn. It will be pulled. And E is confirmatory order of taking Bergeron Way. With that, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is Select Board Comments. Are there any Select Board comments? Mr. Gieto.
I talked with the town clerk and received information on the number of people who have taken out papers for town meeting representative. She had sent information out to all the people who had been town meeting representatives and were up for this 2023 election. The information that she forwarded to me indicated that there were only about 22 people who had taken out papers for this time. And each time that we vote, we vote for 56 people, for a third of the total representation. So we're quite far behind in terms of being able to populate the town meeting. And I just thought that it would be important to mention that, to urge people to become town meeting members. The town meeting members actually are the government of the town. I'll repeat that. The town meeting members are the government of the town. They vote for the budget. They vote for the laws of the town, and a whole lot of other things. The Board of Selectmen does a lot of administrative things, does things dealing with policy, things of that nature, and report to the people in the town on where the town stands. That's our job. The town meeting representatives are to take that information and to make decisions on where the community is going to go, what they want to see in the community, what they want to purchase, because you can't do anything without money, or hardly anything. And so between now and Valentine's Day, which is the close of the opportunity for people to submit their papers, I hope that a lot of people will take that to heart and will take out papers and run for the town meeting representatives. So that's the story.
Thank you, Mr. Gieto. That's very helpful. I did see the advertisement in, I think it was the Suburban Shopper. And so the deadline you said is around Valentine's Day, February?
On February 14th. Everybody knows when Valentine's Day is.
So I too ask everyone, please, that's another way to serve the town. Are there any other Select Board comments? Oh, yeah. Vice Chair Cavie.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. I really enjoy the work that I do here on the Select Board, and I love working with colleagues who are on the board currently. I've enjoyed working with colleagues in the past. And one of the things I've often felt was really important to doing that work is really feeling like I don't personally own anything. All the things we do, we do as a team, even if we disagree on something and I get outvoted, I really still feel like the work that we're doing is collective. And it's part of the things that I draw some joy out of. And so I, you know, for better or for worse, I have always been sort of turned off by the idea of tooting my own horn, which I'm going to have to do here for a second, but it's only because I want to congratulate somebody else's work. Recently, the Massachusetts Select Board Association has picked a new Board of Directors. I was able to get a seat on that. At first, I was concerned because I know the prior person to represent District III was our very own Chairwoman Roberts. And when I heard I got the seat, I thought I had somehow inadvertently taken it from her. Turns out, that couldn't be further from the truth. She's been, instead, she has been promoted to First Vice President of the Mass Select Board Association. So on a board of, I don't know, eight people representing all of the Select Boards in all of Massachusetts, two of those members are from Stoughton. And I think that, you know, that's, I'm very grateful to be one of those members, but more than anything else, I'm really grateful to have an entirely different avenue to work again with Ms. Deborah Roberts, who has served on that board with distinction, on this board with distinction. And so I just wanted to congratulate her on the promotion and look forward to learning from you on that board and working with you.[488.49][488.49](applause)
Well, thank you. Thank you all very much for the recognition. And I feel the same way about you, Vice Chair Cavie. We're going to do great things together. We're going to continue to do great things together. And one of the things that they asked us to do on the Massachusetts Select Board Association is to engage with our citizens of the town of Stoughton and escalate issues to the Mass Municipal Association. So I will continually ask you, what issues would you like for us to escalate? So already, two people have come to me, and one said, well, how do we work better with the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, the SRA? Because all towns don't have a redevelopment authority. So I think we are leader, we're one of the leaders in that respect, and that's what we could take to the Mass Municipal Association. Another person says to me, well, maybe, how do you approach the Select Board to ask questions, you know, to be concise so the ask will be quick, understandable, and we can move on to the next step? Well, so it's really communication. How do you communicate with the board and not feel like threatened or nervous or anything like that? Because we are your representatives, and we do listen to you. So I turn to Vice Chair Cavie. Have you heard anyone ask what subject matter can be escalated to the MMA? And when things are escalated to the MMA, that also means the lega slate of branch.
I haven't yet had the conversation, though. One of the things I think that we have, I think, done an especially good job of standing up and starting, is something that you, initiative you'd begun with the town through REMAP and then later through the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee, is a look at questions like, you know, questions about our hiring practices, our culture and behaviors, to see how we can be better, more inclusive, engage people who hadn't been engaged in the past, involve people who hadn't been involved in the past, and to, you know, really bring in a stronger emphasis into diversity and inclusion with regard to, our case is usually within hiring, but it's also something that I think that we have taken as a town very seriously more generally. It's something that we, I think the phrase you often remind me of is that Stoughton is a welcoming community. And I think that's something that is, we can't just say it, we've got to embody it. And I think that a lot of the steps that we've taken to do that, both by being members of REMAP and also taking it a step further, which is something you've done, I would love to be able to see that model suggested to other communities as a way to start the conversation, to start the work. And so that's personally something I would like to see a priority. And I get the general sense, I think that that is something that the MSA also sees value in, and something they want to see as well. And (laughing) one more, very quick one. In my conversations, I have talked with members of the MSA about senior housing and the importance of senior housing, which was another thing that I did mention at New Year's Eve, or New Year's, after New Year's, was going to be a priority for me in this year. There are a number of people I've talked to who are already working on those, some of those issues in their own towns. So as far as something I would like to be able to bring back here is some information from them on how, you know, what's worked for them and what's worked, what doesn't work. And because I am, as I have mentioned in the past, pretty hell bent on getting some progress in that area as well.
Wonderful. So, thank you so very, very much, everyone. So still have a lot of work to do. Moving right along to Mr. Carrara, did you have any comments? Alrighty. Okay, and then moving right along to Town Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a few announcements, if you'll indulge me just for a few minutes. The first one, I'm personally very excited about. This month, we've had several more Vietnam-era veteran claims approved by the VA. Many of them have been denied decades ago, and only now are being awarded their rightfully deserved benefits. So far this year, we are on track to increase the average benefit they receive from about $1,700 to $2,000, bringing the monthly amount to over $1 million. The average amount of these claims, not including any back pay, is about $3,800 a month, from the VA, I should say. Now, this wouldn't have been possible without the administrative support work done by our Veterans Agent, Sean Butrica, and by his staff. And I think it reflects so well upon who we are as a community that our Vietnam-era veterans are now receiving the benefits they deserve. And I want to thank Sean, he's our Veterans Agent, for his leadership and his advocacy on behalf of those veterans.[875.73][875.73](applause)
Sean, please stand so we can see.[880.13][880.13](laughing) Yay![882.13][882.13](applause)
Thank you, Sean. Second thing is a brief update on the fire station project with respect to the schedule of the demolition. Hazmat remediation started on January 23rd and is ongoing the rest of this week, expected to be completed by Thursday. On-site hazmat hygienist is also, is always onsite, taking air samples and monitoring the work. Pest control is in place and was in place two weeks prior to the start of remediation. The building is fenced off and secured each night. The lower-level flooring and mastic has been removed and cleared by the onsite hygienist. Currently working the attic, currently, the team is working in the attic removing the vermiculite insulation. Once the hazmat contractor is complete, the hygienist will test the area and issue a letter stating that the building is clear and ready for demolition. Demolition is expected to start next week. Next, for your calendar, the water, sewer, and solid waste status and financials and potential rate increase is scheduled as an open session here in the Great Hall on 2/13. Please look at the town website to see exactly what time and what the agenda is. Just a brief note on that, we know that our water and sewage enterprise funds are way underfunded. We are in need of a funding increase. We have a required statutory hearing that will be scheduled later in February, but this is an additional hearing that Mark and I have decided to do just for open transparencies, public information. We'll be conducting those on this and other issues coming before us in the very near future. So please put it on your calendar, February 13th. More information to follow. Last item, as all of you know, we had a mistake in the annual taxes causing invoices to go out that were based upon fiscal '22 valuations. We recognize that the same day it happened, and the issue has been painfully corrected. So let me read the note. Paula Newt, Treasurer/Collector, would like the taxpayers to know that the corrected FY ' '23 third and fourth quarter real estate tax bills will be mailed this Friday, February 3rd, 2023. Payments received and posted to your tax bill before January 31st will be reflected on the corrected bill. There will be two remit slips in the envelope marked as Q3 and Q4. Both quarters are due on May 1st, 2023, and no interest will be added to the payment that was due in February 2023. An insert will also be in the envelope explaining why the taxpayer is receiving a corrected bill. The real estate tax bills may be paid online at stotan.org. One comment on this, our assessors department, led now by Tricia, and our treasurer's office, headed up by Paula, from day one circled the wagons with their staffs, addressed this very complex, complicated rebilling in a historic, historically short period of time. They estimated it would be five days just to input the new data, and it was done in 10 hours. And for that, members of the Board of Selectmen, you bought them pizza, and they're very grateful and appreciative. And I'm very grateful for the way they addressed and tackled this problem. Nobody was pointing fingers, nobody was looking to place blame, everyone was just focused on solving the problem, and most importantly, explaining it to the Stoughton taxpayers so that there was clarity and understanding of what happened and what the impact is and how we fixed it. So a special thanks to both Tricia and Paula, their leadership with their respective departments in addressing and fixing this problem with no complaining, no blame placing, just all smiles and hard work. So I'd like to congratulate them on your behalf. That's it for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to Citizens comments. Let's start with the gentleman on my right, probably on your left, yes, with the glasses. Please step forward, state your name and address. But before, before you start, I would like to say, before we begin with Citizens comments, I would like to remind everyone or state some ground rules for the agenda item, which I, as the chair, would like to voice as a preference before we begin. Citizen's comment is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, but shouldn't be a dialogue or a debate. I therefore encourage the board members and town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those that you want to follow up on and/or warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comment doesn't require discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I would request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker, and then on to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone all the time they need, but we have a full agenda, and as always, do like to hear the speakers, but if you can limit your comments to one or two minutes, no more than three. Anyone addresses the board should refrain from making personal charges or disparaging remarks and from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of the members of town boards or of town staff or of citizens of the community and/or each other. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks during public comment in a respectful manner. Whenever possible, please try and refrain from mentioning the names of private individuals in your public comments. Thank you very much. And with that said, please state your name and your address, because this is Citizen's comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Maybe talk a little bit louder, please?
All right. All right. My name's Scott Heller. I live at 559 Plain Street. I'm the guy, I think, that's been blowing up all your emails about the situation on Plain Street. Forgive me for that, but I feel like the situation is quite urgent. We have, I actually have some handouts with the actual location of where I'm referring to. We've had many accidents at this location across the street from my house. There is a blind turn when you come from Morton Street heading towards Andy's and that, sorry, when you're coming from west heading towards Morton, where the road actually kind of disappears on you, and the way the telephone poles are situated gives the illusion that the road travels straight. And in this location is where Ms. Goodrich and Mr. Luddington lost their lives in 2018. It was quite tragic. It was a terrible scene. My neighbors and I all witnessed this, and it was painful. On January 7th, there was an accident right in front of my house where the whole left side of a vehicle was ripped off, and kids, there were three, three boys, four girls in another car screaming, crying. It was a horrible scene. Our fire hydrant was ripped off, we lost water. That was really hard. I went out to help on the scene. I'm not a first responder, and I don't want to be. So something needs to be done on the street. Cars travel at a wicked speed there. That spot where the couple lost their lives, there's a telephone pole there that has been replaced. I have a note from the people who live at that property for 37 years, and it's been replaced 10 times. Their house has had the power lines ripped from it three times. They've had to replace their mailboxes multiple times. It's, I have not been here yet because I sort of thought that this was an obvious situation, but I do need to bring it to your attention. You replied to me, Mr. Gieto, I appreciate that. The chief of police replied to me. I met personally with the chief of the fire department and his deputy chief and agreed that there is an opportunity here to look into the data, not just about the frequency of these accidents, but the severity of the accidents that are caused by a high rate of speed here. So there are suggestions that we have proposed in this. I realize there's probably a traffic study or something that would need to happen, but I do implore you to make this happen as soon as you can. It's hard to watch this. I have children who are here who have seen these things happen, and we can't even let them out on the street to get our garbage cans or get their mail, get our mail, or ride their bikes because it's a dangerous road. I walk my daughter to school some mornings, and it's scary. I'm not going to lie. So with that, I hope that this is heard. I have a group of neighbors who are all on board with this, who have also written letters who would like this to be addressed as soon as possible. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name on-
And I was just going to ask you for yours as well.
Yes, Scott Heller.
Thank you, Scott. Tom Coulter.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Thank you, Scott.
It's 559 Plain Street where I live, and I'm willing to meet with anyone. I went directly to the fire chief and the deputy chief, who, you know, I'm very grateful for because they took the time to do it. And another representative who lives on West Street, I don't know who that is, but he also reached out and called me, and so did Detective Sergeant O'Connor. So I'd just like to acknowledge and thank them for reaching out to us. It is an urgent situation.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Heller.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Tisdale and I would like to come out and visit the site if we could.
Please.
So if you would just give Reggie a call tomorrow, set up a time that's convenient for you to be there, and we'll come out to see you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the information.
Sure. Can I leave someone?
Thank you. Yes, please leave it with Ms. Lena, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes, Vice Chair Cavie.
Mr. Heller, I appreciate you taking the time to come down. You don't have to necessarily stand up. I just wanted to thank you for coming to speak on this. I did catch the emails. I also, once I saw the Sergeant O'Connor had been contacted, I had a lot of confidence that he's been very good about these things. Sometimes there's not necessarily a quick turnaround because he's very thorough, but he does take these things very seriously. So I'm, I'm under the assumption that he's in the process of doing an analysis, but Mr. Coulter, could you just, at our next meeting, provide an update to see, you know, even if he's in the process of doing something, if we can get some, some information about where they currently stand?
Will do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrara? And then, Mr. Tisdale.
I don't, I don't think we have to waste time doing a traffic study. I think we should just be able to get right on it. It's a very simple process that they're coming from the West Street, Plain Street intersection. Some of them are doing 45-50, and they're on, and if you are headed the other way towards Bay Road on that street, you get a surprise because I'm working in town and I'm coming around that curve in the 10-wheeler, and they're on your side, and you take a big gulp. I've lost a mirror on the pole moving over because of that, but I can imagine what they saw. I saw the hydrant that was taken out, there was dirt down the street, all washed down because that thing must have been roaring when it was let go. But there's got to be something done. There is an illusion that the road will continue straight, and I've seen three poles come down in a row down there one time, and it was, it was just, I don't know if we got a, I don't think we have to make a big deal about it, but I think there's got to be a, a speed decrease in the zone, there's got to be some arrows like-
Signage.
To be, you know, directing the cars with reflective, but there might even have to be a flashing arrow put on there some way because they're moving. And to tell you the truth, most of them are from out of town. Most of them are jetting to the, jetting to the train and jetting home from the train.
That's great.
Mr. Tisdale.
I'd like to thank you for coming forward to us, to us, Mr. Keller. Just so you know, there's been a lot of conversation on this in the last week or so. If you don't know who I am, I'm Mark Tisdell. I'm, I've been the town engineer, I'm the Director of Development Services, a few other things the last few months. But I do usually deal with issues like you have. I've spoken to Sergeant O'Connor, I spoke to Brian Holmes today, and our DPW director today, kind of got the whole story. I also spoke to our traffic engineers that we have on call and got some really good short-term, low-cost improvements we can do for that area. I think it was already mentioned, like Selectman Carrara said, maybe a flashing Chevron- I think it was already mentioned, like Selectman Carrara said, maybe a flashing Chevron sign, you know, with the arrows. And then at the intersection, there's some other signs we can implement. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Lincoln and Pleasant Street intersection. There's flashing dynamic signs. So when somebody comes to the stop sign, on the other approach, there's warning signs that start flashing only when cars come to the stop sign. So it really forces cars to slow down. We've gotten positive feedback on that. So I think simple things like that could improve that situation tremendously. So I wouldn't mind having further conversations with you to get more details and going out with Tom, maybe doing a little site inspection to get the lay of the land. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There were a couple other hands. Yes, in, next to Mr. Scott Heller. Nathan Cleveland. From the.
Yes, thank you very much. Nathan Cleveland, 527 Plain Street. I wanted to follow Mr. Heller because I wanted to comment on the same issue. I've lived at that address for 10 years. I've seen the same things that he's seen and it has become a safety issue. And so I'm glad to hear that you're all taking it seriously and that there will be a response. You know, I think using some of our town engineers to do a traffic study to figure out what the solutions can be. As Mr. Heller alluded to, I think the two main culprits here are speed and the blind corner, particularly at night where the telephone poles give you the illusion of a straight when there is in fact a corner. And so, you know, we would be very supportive of changes that would reduce the speed that cars are traveling, provide directional signs or guardrails or barriers to prevent folks from going into our neighbor's yards and the telephone poles or my front yard, which has happened before. And so I just wanted to sort of lend my voice to Mr. Heller's comments and thank him for really spearheading this effort on behalf of myself and a number of our other neighbors, you know, who have lived in that spot for a long time and have had to deal with, you know, some pretty horrific traffic accidents that, you know, we'd love to see remedied not only for the motorists, but for us as the folks who are also impacted when those things happen. So it does sound like this is, you know, something that's on everyone's radar and we certainly appreciate that. And we'd love for the town to keep us informed on what solutions that can be implemented there and the timeline for which that might be undertaken so that we can make this a safer place for, for the whole community. And, you know, if you'll be coming out to the area to do a site visit, I'm happy to be a part of that as well tomorrow. So thank you all for your attention to this. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland. Were there any other comments? Okay, I saw Mr. Zemanian.
Good evening and thank you, members of the Select Board, Madam Chair. My name is Mark Zemanian and I'm here tonight as the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I want to thank you for hearing my request tonight. The Stoughton Community Preservation Committee is asking boards, committees, and authorities which hold a seat on the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, to write a letter of support to our legislators for all the good work that we do for Stoughton. The CPC has been a steadfast supporter of the town of Stoughton and our schools. We see ourselves as collectively one town, united. And if I may, I'd like to share some facts with you tonight. The CPC fund has contributed over $9 million toward municipal projects and projects for the community since its inception. This includes $1.4 million for outdoor recreational amenities at the new Stoughton High School, $300,000 for a multi-sports center at Halloran Park, and over $370,000 for emergency housing relief for Stoughton residents during the pandemic. We've also given $700,000, over 700, for a new playground, a town-owned playground behind the Wilkins School. There are many other projects that I can't, I don't have the time to mention tonight, but these, these projects would have to be funded through the general fund if the CPA did not exist in Stoughton. To date, the town of Stoughton has received $2.7 million in state CPA match, matching And that is solely because Stoughton had the foresight to adopt the CPA. By the way, 344,000 of those dollars came in the year 2022 alone. This year, the CPC had an overwhelming response to our public request for applications and will be recommending funding on currently 10 projects with, tomorrow night, we'll be hearing an 11th project from you, actually, the Select Board. And if that project is to pass the CPC tomorrow evening as a recommendation, that would be a total amount of $2.37 million. It would have been difficult, if not impossible, for the town to have sufficient funds to support these projects without having adopted the CPA. I therefore ask you to join the CPC and I'm asking all, again, boards, authorities, and committees that have a member on the CPC to write a letter of support for the CPC that will be delivered to our legislators at a, at a future time. And I thank you in advance for your support for this. If necessary, I would ask that this be put on your next possible agendas. This is a matter of urgency. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will put it on my next agenda to do that.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Ms. Walsh, I saw you with your hand up and Mr. Murphy, I saw you with your hand up. And then, I'm sorry, I don't know your, it's Mr. Smith. So Walsh, Murphy, Smith. And then we'll go to Bannas and someone else on that side.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Hopefully this will be of a lighter tone. Frequently when I open up my Boston Globe and see their writing about Stoughton, I'm filled with dread of what they are going to say about the town that I know and love. But recently, there was some wonderful news. MassDOT bought 12 new snowplows and they had a statewide competition amongst elementary and middle schoolers to name each one. And the kindergartners at the Wilkins School were one of the 12 winners. And their truck is going to be called Snow Drop and that logo will be on the side of the truck. Part of their reward is that the truck is supposed to visit. I don't know if that's happened yet. I can't imagine that those snowplow trucks have been very busy this winter. Other towns had winters too and it's interesting what the kids came up with. They had Sled Zeppelin, Sherlock Snomes, and there were nine others. But I just thought that was a tidbit of good news and it shows that even the youngest people in Stoughton have community pride and are willing to display it.
Thank you for sharing, Mrs. Walsh. We couldn't hear what you were saying. We'll take the money. You want to take one and pass it down? Mr. Murphy, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, you just need to press the button right, right on the microphone. Press the button, there you go. Thank you very much.
Peter Murphy, precinct two, town meeting representative. What I did was I got a lot of complaints from neighbors over the years about Turnpike Street and the lack of sidewalks. And with that, I went out and I got a petition, got signatures on the petition and, let me start here. The traffic on Turnpike Street has become worse over the years. There are no sidewalks from Central Street to Park Street, creating an unsafe condition. As the town meeting representative, I've been asked by several neighbors, when is the town going to address this issue? I have appeared in an article, been placed on this year's warrant, but was told that the deadline had passed. I have also discussed this issue with Representative Walter Timmeltie. He will be submitting a request to this year's state budget for funding to address this request. You may not get all of it, but it'll be, you know, it'll be some of it. I'm asking on behalf of the residents and the butters of Turnpike Street that since the warrant is still open, that the Select Board insert this article, please the attached petition and the presentation that I have prepared. That's my request is that you, seeing that the warrant has not been closed, that you insert it. This is something that is not uncommon and has been done over the years. So I ask that you do that. Thank you. Are any questions?
Thank you. Were you going to say something?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, it's actually to, to our town engineer. I could be mistaken, but I thought there was already some project in the pipeline to do exactly this and so that we don't have redundant projects. I just wanted to see if that's true.
You're close, but it's a separate project. The Park and Turnpike Street intersection is doing sidewalks up to Campanelli. That was part of the sewer project where we agreed to do that, that intersection over, but they do stop at around 10th Street. So I believe Mr. Murphy's considering from about 10th Street up to Central.
Correct. What happens is if you, where the pipeline comes, and that was part of the project, the presentation I have, if you look at it where they cut the pipeline and they saw it from 10th Street down to Campanelli. And with that, they're going to be, have to be repaving that road anyways. So my concern is that it runs the full length of Central Street all the way to Park because if you look at the presentation that the, that they had made to the finance committee, they were coming up from Park Street up to Campanelli. So to tie it all together is to do the, from Central Street all the way down to Park Street. One of the biggest concerns is there's bus stops on Turnpike Street. You now have Amazon, I don't want to get into a whole discussion, but I can make a further presentation at the time. My main concern is that this gets into the warrant and I appreciate if that happens.
I believe the clerk's office, our town clerk, Mrs. Carrera, informed you that you had missed the deadline?
Right, and I said that I had missed the deadline, but the warrant is still open and it's not, as in past years' practice, it has not been uncommon for the Select Board to insert articles such as this nature into the warrant. So it's, it's common, and I don't want to say common practice, but it's past practice.
Madam Chair, may I?
And what I was saying to Vice Chair Cavy, but go ahead, Vice Chair Cavy. I just wanted to comment what I was saying to you.
Mr. Murphy, I definitely appreciate the article. I personally love sidewalks and I know that we have a bit of a shortage of them in town in some really key areas. I found myself walking on, on, you know, as I've gone through election cycles, I try to knock on people's doors and say hi to people, so I've walked all through the town. And on some of the windiest, busiest streets we have, there are no sidewalks. So I think that this is, you know, a wonderful project that I actually really like. And I feel like, like you've put me in the first moral dilemma with regard to petitioned articles I've ever had because I've, you know, when they, when they come to us, you know, part of, of their importance is that they bypass the Select Board and that they are automatically inserted, really without, you know, without any, any involvement by the Select Board. And there's like an important, for me at least, important element of that, that, that this is a way for citizens to petition directly to, to town meeting and bypass the Select Board and bring things directly to the representatives. So the idea of inserting something that is meant to bypass me, I feel like, oh geez, what am I, like what am I going to do here? Because I definitely agree with it. I think this is a wonderful project, but I also, there are ones that come to me that I insert that I don't agree with at all and I, and I want to, you know, sort of not support those, not move those forward. And I feel like if I do it for one, I should, I should be doing it for all. I think it's worth having the discussion at maybe our next meeting because the warrant will close at our next meeting. And so we can maybe have that discussion when we choose what we will insert. But I just, I want to say that like I, I love this project. I think it's a great project, an important one. I think that the fact that it came as a petitioned article that didn't make the deadline and now I'm being asked to insert it as a member of the Select Board, I find a little bit like troubling given sort of how I understand this. But I think, you know, with some conversations and maybe just looking up some, you said it's happened in the past, I'd like to just see some examples of that. I'll perhaps getting, get into, be more supportive. What I would like to also see is even if this doesn't end up in the current warrant, I would like to see if we can revisit this in some other capacity.
Just for the record, over the years, I've been a town meeting rep for many years and as many town meetings I have stepped up, I have talked about the issues on Turnpike Street. I had a discussion with Officer O'Connor about the speed limit there. Again, I talked about sidewalks. This is not something that shouldn't be any surprise to this board or previous boards. And again, it's a case of what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And it's a case of where I have discussed this and the way I was told to do it was get a petition article. That way there it gets into the warrant. Unfortunately, I did miss the date, but we're trying to put the things together. As you know, I have another article going before town meeting and this one here, again, the last special town meeting. Why did one get into special town meeting and others didn't? I'm not here to discuss that, but that's when it was, okay, put together petition and get it in. And like I said, for you to say that it wasn't brought to the board's attention, I don't think that's a fair statement because this article, this situation has been brought before, this board and many other boards. And this is basically, my neighbor said to me once, fisher cut bait. Well, it was time I stepped up to the plate. I put a petition together. I'm now retired. I have a little more time, more time to think about it, more time to dwell on it. And with this, I'm asking you to submit this into the warrant. That's all.
Yeah, just to, I just want to be really clear. I actually, I am full supportive of what you've brought forward and, and I agree with everything you've just said. I just, I would like to have a conversation just about the role of the board with regard to petition warrants and make sure that we're, we're doing something that I can, I feel comfortable with.
Are you saying that you would bring this before the next Select Board's meeting to put it into the warrant?
Well, personally, I'd like to have that conversation, yeah.
So, but wouldn't the warrant be closed by then?
No, the warrant is going to be closed on, on February 7th. So it's, it's open until the 7th. We'll be inserting all of the warrants, all the, all the articles on the 7th, at which point we will then close the warrant.
So technically I could do my presentation then at that's February 7th meeting?
That would be the chair's discretion, but, but that would, all of those things would could be true, yeah.
So did anyone else want to make a comment? So, Mr. Murphy, I think this is a great capital project plan, but it did miss the deadline. We are talking about it as, as something that needs to happen, but it did miss the deadline. It's a material dollar impact to do this. This is why we have deadlines so we can price things out, but this did miss the deadline. But it's not being overlooked. But it will not make this town meeting. There were several others that also missed the deadline and we had to share that news with them as well. We're not saying that the project does not have value or it's not important to us. We're saying that it missed the deadline, but we are looking at it.
I'm going to stop now because anything I say, I'm just going to stop now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to put it on? Are you gonna put it on the agenda for next, for the next meeting?
I cannot make any promises, Mr. Murphy.
Well, wouldn't I know if you're gonna put that on the agenda?
Probably the next time we have our meeting, which is February 7th, that Thursday before that date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, is this on?
Oh, no, it's not.
Is it on there?
There you go, thank you.
I'm Paul Smith, I'm from 60 Cottonwood. And this is about SMAC. I was at the SMAC meeting just recently, and we were told we couldn't speak. And there's a problem there, and since this board has appointed two members of that board, and they're a five-member board, it's a significant, you have significant power about this election that we had, that they won't open the ballot box. I don't know why, they won't tell us. They're doing a, they're spending money trying to stop it or something, and I'd like some help, get some answers. We voted in the end of November, and they still haven't counted the ballots. Now, the vote is kind of important in America, and I don't care what you're voting for. But that vote in that ballot box means something, and it better. And if it's being manipulated, or it's being misused, I'd like to know about it. That's all, nothing, everybody knows the story. I'd like some answers, that's all. Now, you have power, because two of the members you appointed, and you can get them off, just like that. But things are going on there that aren't right. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Is that Mr. Bannister's turn?
Yes.
On, yeah, thank you. Thank you to the board, and thank you to the new town manager. I just was here to compliment him on his presentation last week.
Thank you.
Yep, on the presentation last week to the FinCom, he brought the fiscal issue that we have within that budget, and it's a little shaky and scary for the taxpayers. And this ties right into Mr. Gito bringing up at the same meeting, the thought of the five-year plan, which Mr. Coulter totally agreed with, okay? I wanna say that he showed great respect to the Finance Committee, he let the Finance Committee know that he would absolutely discuss every issue that comes along, and I can't say that that was previously done. He told me not to talk about the fire station or any of that, but the non-transparent process that I've brought up several times, and I'm not gonna go into the details, because I was told not to, I wanna just compliment him for that. And I wanna say then, I'm hoping he can coordinate the boards, the volunteers, and the paid staff of the town, to get out of the silos and only worry about their little thing, and maybe be the coordinator, the offensive or defensive coordinator, to make things happen, to avoid the hole in the ground for nine years in the center, okay? My personal, which I've been accused of, my personal agenda about the selection of the fire station, it's all issues that should have been discussed when they eliminated the original safety building committee. Everything was behind closed doors. The citizens, the taxpayers, with $4 million over now, I spoke with the Vice Chair of the FinCom, and it's just issues the taxpayers need to know. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Bannister.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter.
Are there any other citizens' comments? Yes, please, step forward, state your name and address, please. Hi.
Hi.
Turn that little button.
My name is Joanne O'Reilly. I just wanna thank the town manager and all of you, because I was very concerned, I was glad that he mentioned about the 400 Prospect Street rodent, like they were really working on the, they did the rodent check or whatever they do, and, because that was like, I'm concerned about the whole thing, but that was kinda like my prime concern was, because, I mean, that could be like a major health issue in the neighborhood, because it already has done, people are already working on it, we've all, it's all like, kind of like taken care of, but it could re-erupt and be a real disaster for a health issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So I turn to the TV cable, are there any citizens' comments that I'm overlooking? With there being none, we move right along in our meeting, to our consent agenda items. We have 5A, which is open meeting minutes of October 27th, December 20th, December 27th, January 3rd, January 10th, and January 17th. We have item B, which is an agreement between the town of Stoughton and the Public Works Department. Now, as you recall, this was presented to the board in times past, we approved it, it went to town meeting, they voted on it. So I believe the only thing they are asking us to do is sign the document. It's no change, if I'm wrong with that, okay? So that's that, and then it's 5C, which is the Milton Cat Sewer Easement Agreement. It was revised with the language that we voted on, and once we, if you read the backup documentation, you can see where that language has been inserted. And then it is item D, which is utility use and access easement approval for MAP 78 lot 3. Does anyone wanna pull an item for discussion? Yes, Mr. Carrera?
C, please, and D.
C and D, okay. Does anyone else wanna pull an item? So with that being, that being none, on the meeting minutes, and I forgot what dates, but there were some edits made to those meetings, some misspelled names, some, there was a comment that was added, and you have that version of the document in your possession now, but nothing really material change on those meeting minutes. Okay, so let's discuss item C first, which is Milton Cat Sewer Easement Agreement. That's the revised version, it will include the language that we requested. Mr. Carrera?
Madam Chairman, through you, I'm gonna yield to Mr. Tisdale, we spoke prior, and he's gonna explain what, he had to make another change that I had written down, so he probably did it a little more eloquently than I did.
All righty, great. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Yeah, your comment at the last meeting, the board did approve the sewer easement with the condition that we address the construction of the sewer line, any settlement in the trench, in the roadway for the sewer line, paving, anything associated with the construction of that sewer line, for one year, the contractor owns that work. So that's exactly what we added on page two, item four, that condition explains that. So it's the sewer line, all associated construction, including paving, and trench settlement, et cetera, for one year. So other than that, the document's exactly the same as you seen last time.
Mr. Carrera, does it answer your question? Okay. Any other questions on item C, Milton Cat? Well, we'll move right along, and the next one item that was pulled was item D, the utility use and access easement approval, MAP 78 lot 3. Mr. Carrera?
When I first saw this in the agenda, I almost looked past it, because I was, I hustled through it once, then I go back and I highlight and I read. I think when, when there's something like that, and it's in, I don't wanna just see map and page and lot, I want the distinctive name on what we're doing put there, so that when we look down, we know what we're looking at. I just wanna bring a little insight to this board, when I was told, when I brought something before yous, that the history is just gonna ring true on this site, that we now do not own access into 400 Prospect Street, that we now have a 5,800 and something square foot easement. And I gotta give it to the Recuperos, for not charging us more than a dollar. But as I told Attorney Winner, this doesn't preclude them, if somebody takes over ownership of the Recupero estate, coming to you and saying, a dollar's not enough. We want 10 grand or 15 grand for the use of our property, because we're entering into something, when we were in that room over there, when we took the land by eminent domain, I told, and I made the comment, it didn't get in the minutes, but I made the comment that the roadway was not on the eminent domain land-taking piece. And now we're into another restriction on this site. We're not going down into a rabbit hole, we're not playing chutes and ladders, we're dealing with the residents' money, and their tax, their tax money, and what we're gonna be taxed on. I brought to you a sane proposal, and I was shut up, because nobody wanted to take action. This thing is ridiculous, it's getting worse by the minute, and nobody wants to face the fact that it's the wrong site. It was not picked as a number-one site, we were led astray, or some people were led astray, by the illustrious person who waltzed out of town. 54, 850 Park Street is where it belongs. I talked to that gentleman one weekend to bring it before you people, to give the fire department a proper, decent piece of property, to give them a station that was drive-through like they asked for. Now, they still have the antiquated station that was on Freeman Street, it's just in a wetter area, with lousy access. We don't have to RFP or do anything like that, we have the financing, we should be smart enough to move it up the street, make the deal, and say there was a mistake made, it wasn't by this board, because I asked to be part of the information, and Mr. Bannister was absolutely right. I wanted to be, take part when the stuff was going down, so that, but alls I kept hearing was, oh, you're gonna be pleasantly surprised. When we're board of selectmen members, I don't wanna be pleasantly surprised, I wanna be informed. And I know I'm probably being looked at like I'm tired of hearing about this, but this is gonna come back, and it's gonna haunt us for a long time. I went to conservation, I saw something, a project of this size pushed through in 22 They weren't even concerned about stuff. Know what the best thing that was said that night, which I almost choked on? There was filling done on that site, the eminent domain wipes it out, so the filling is there, and that allows them to play with the building, because there was filling. And our agent said, thank God, we're gonna build a building there, it's gonna straighten out the wetland problem. What fixes the wetland problems off of West Street in the woods when a tree falls in a wetland? Do we ask somebody to build a house to get the tree out of the way, or does the habitat take care of it? The habitat takes care of it, same way the fires out in the Midwest, Mount St. Helens is now refurbishing, because that's what nature does. Don't tell me building a fire station in a wet area is making the wetland better. I saw the restrictions on where we're gonna put the snow, how are we gonna do this? It's gonna be a lot of problems. I sat on that board for six years. It's the worst thing we could do for this town, worst thing. And I asked you guys to just consider talking to the people up there, to put a fire station in a proper area where we could be proud, and access for the fire department would be better. Because when you look at where they gotta put the snow, I don't know how they're gonna snowplow it, they're gonna have to station a loader there, because they're not gonna just push it off to the side because of the retention basin and the culvert and all that. Then I had to listen to, we got a culvert, and we're gonna put a piece of concrete over the top of it, because this is gonna be the way to protect that culvert. Now, how you protect a culvert if you're gonna be pounding across it with that kind of weight and trucks? You take it out and you put the proper one in. But we'll be doing that, too. Maybe not in two or three years, but it'll be coming. I just asked this board to do the right thing. Sometimes things are bought for the wrong reason. Thank you.
Mr., oh, were you gonna mention?
Yeah, the question.
Oh, Mr., before you, Mr. Tisdale, Vice Chair Cavie.
Mr. Carrera, I wanna understand your comments in the context of what we've been asked to vote on, and we're asking, being asked to vote on a utility easement, approval of a utility easement.
You can vote on utility easement, I'm just bringing out the fact of different issues that are arising each and every minute.
I'm trying to understand the context of what you're saying, are you saying, so do you believe we should vote for the easement or not vote for the easement? Is the, is the subject?
How is the fire department gonna get in there? They cannot move the road.
That's what I'm asking.
There's too much floodplain. If they could've moved the road, it would've been on the plan. See, that's how it works. We're rushing to put this thing out to bid, but nobody's watching what's going on, so this is just another slice that wasn't added into the conservation, and added into how they were gonna protect the stuff. Go ahead.
Mr. Carrera, I'm trying to figure out if any of the comments you has made are based on any item with, that's actually on our agenda for tonight.
It's based on the easement.
Easement, so are you making an argument that we ought to not vote for the easement, or that we ought to vote for the easement? Because it sounds like it has to do nothing with easement at all.
Oh, no, it has everything to do with the easement. What I'm trying to tell you is, we don't own the property, it's an easement, which anything can be set on, and a separate price can be bargained out at a different time. It'll be like paying a toll to get across a piece of property, because we don't own it.
I appreciate it, I have a better understanding, I appreciate it.
That's all I'm trying to say. But this project, these little problems keep arising. And why would you put $30 million in the woods when you're traveling over somebody else's property? And God hope that I thanked the Recuperos for not asking for 20, 30, 40 million, I mean, 1,000, to get across that piece of property? Because everything has worth. And what are we gonna do, in the back room and take it by eminent domain again? I knew, that's why I asked. I asked Attorney Winner at that time, were we gonna go into eminent domain proceedings? And eminent domain proceedings would've started at 528,000, not 1.4 million, when the town manager at that time slapped her hand on the table and told me he deserved it, because he put an RFP in. And I asked Attorney Winner, is the RFP off the table? And he most certainly said, yes, it was gone. Why did we pay 1.4? It was ridiculous.
I feel like the road we're going down has nothing to do with an easement, at all.
You might not say that, I'm just trying to say.
So it feels like, but it feels like it might be out of order, and I wanna actually talk about what's actually on our agenda tonight, not a bunch of things that happened a year ago. Not a bunch of things that happened a year ago, or things that might happen at some point in the future, but aren't on our agenda.
I'll stand and sense it again.
Okay, so with that said, Mr. Tisdale, the easement agreement for $1, can you shed some more insight? Just on the easement, just.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got you. On the easement, the history of the easement goes back to when Robin was here, she asked us to do due diligence on the property. So we went through and looked at the, the property lines relative to where the driveway was, and very noticeable on the GIS that the driveway was over the property line. It was, it was stated at, at that point in time. That's the reason for the wording in the article that says the select board has the authority to acquire the easements, because that was known at that time. So, moving forward, working with the Recuperos, I mirror what Scott said, I mean, the Recuperos have been great through this whole process, very smooth. We explained to them that we can construct a driveway going around where we are right now, it's just not as good. You know, it's better to have a straight shot in and out of the property, and I think as Scott can attest. Could we do it with a curve? Yes, the plans we showed, town meeting showed a curve, but it's better to be straight. I mean, we all, we all agree with that. The Recuperos worked with the town, got the easement squared away, and that's what's in front of you today. It's for utilities, access, utilities, access, and use of, of that area.
Okay, so that's the, that's the question, that's the motion that's on the table for us to consent to. Are there any other questions? Mr. Gito.
I think, can you hear me?
Yes, I can now.
I think Mr. Carrara asked a question about whether or not someone else, if they bought the property, could change the easement, and perhaps our attorney might address that.
Mr. Winner, can you address that, please?
With your permission, and thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for recognizing me, I'm happy to answer that question. So, an easement is a property right. It's a property right that's recorded at the registry of deeds. You may be familiar with the concept of a fee, which is sort of the fundamental property right, you own the land. The easement is sort of the next level up, but it's no less of a right. And so, when this gets recorded, so step one was drafted, we did the title work through my office. Step two, we present you with an easement instrument, and that's what you're voting on tonight. Step three is this will get recorded at the registry. When that occurs, the Town of Stoughton owns that right. It's a permanent right that the Town of Stoughton will own. So there's nothing else to renegotiate. There's, that entire process has concluded, and so there'd be no reason to revisit that for the price, the terms, et cetera, unless both parties wanted to mutually. I hope that answers the question, Mr. Gito.
It does, unless Mr., Mr. Carrara wants to ask about that. I mean, I, I brought it up because it was one of the other things that he had mentioned. So, Mr. Carrara, do you have any comments on that?
Anything can be given a right, and anything can be taken away. It doesn't, it doesn't lock it down permanently, because they don't own the land, and they can take us back to court if they wanted to. We don't have to sit there and agree, "Take me back to court, I'll give you more money." One side can go after the other side, if they determine. It's a bigger thing, not owning the property and owning the property. You can deed anything, but it's only a use. I've removed an easement off my property, and the other guy didn't want to, but it came off. It cost me money, but it came off.
Mr. Winner, did you have any comments? Because anyone can revisit the agreement of an easement tomorrow, next year, 20 years from now?
And again, through you, Madam Chair, to the board, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I respectfully disagree. It can't be revisited any more than the former owner of someone's home could come back and say, "I want more for selling it to you 10, 15 years later." I mean, that's the whole point of recording a, a property right instrument in the registry, is to vest those permanent rights in the town so that we don't have to do that, and we're not vulnerable to that. So again, not to belabor the point, but I respectfully disagree.
Thank you very much, Attorney Winner. So, moving on, any more discussion on our consent agenda items?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You said that we are not voting on item E, right?
Item E was pulled.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Mr. Carrara?
I vote on everything but D, I abstain.
Okay, so Mr., let the records reflect that unanimous decision on A, B, C, there was one abstention on item D, and item E was, was pulled, withdrawn. Thank you very much, and moving right along to item six, Stoughton 300th Anniversary Committee applicant Scotty Santos. Please step forward, and nice seeing you again.
Nice seeing you.
So, a little background on Mr. Santos, he was here at our most recent meeting when we talked about the, the 300th Committee, and at the time, we believed that everyone present had been appointed to the 300th Committee. But lo and behold, Mr. Santos had not. So this is the reason he's before us today. And as you recall, he showed a lot of excitement and passion for being on the committee, at the time we thought you were on the committee, and he wanted to share with us more verbally why he's so passionate, and then we'll take the next step. His letter of interest is in our package. So, Mr. Santos, can you please state your name and your address?
Scotty Santos, my address is 428 Pearl Street, right here in Stoughton. I had made some calls to the committee, I found an ad, and overall, I called in, I guess I got picked, but for, for the most part, I'm excited because I get to be a part of something new for me. I've always worked in the car business amongst so many people, and I feel like I could bring a lot to the table. It's a challenge for me to actually see if I can, you know, communicate well and, and bring things in this perspective when it comes to a town, that much of an area and space, and, and actually, it being a town, I wanted to test myself also, and, you know, something like the 300 celebration is important, I think, because when you think about time, yes, 300 years. And a lot of people, I go in depth to think about Stoughton starting 300 years ago and where it come to today, but I have a lot of ideas. I just feel excited about combining my ideas and my strengths with the other candidates. I feel like I'll be a perfect candidate to, to actually celebrate the 300.
Thank you so much, Mr. Santos. So currently, we, we have five others. If we point him, it would be a total six, so we have Joan Callanan, David Lampert, Paul Caprina, Caprenula, I think that's how you pronounce, sorry if I mispronounce your name, Cynthia Walsh, and Dr. Patricia Randolph. Yes, Mr. Carrara?
That's why I asked, at that time, the committee could go to seven. And if this gentleman proves that he wants to be a member, then I'm all for it.
I'm all for it, too.
Yeah, I just got to ask you a couple of questions, but first of all, it's definitely a pleasure to meet you, and I appreciate you stepping up, this, you know, I don't need to say it out loud, but I will, because I've got the mic, that, you know, 300, 300 anniversary doesn't happen all the time, you know? It's, it's, it's an achievement, and, and the fact that we've been able to stay together as a community for 300 years, and, and, you know, and, you know, just, it's, for me, it's always kind of shocking how, even before, you know, even before the foundation of the United States, we spent a lot of time self-governing as, as colonies. And, you know, the fact that we can look 300 years back and say, "We've been able to, you know, keep this ship floating for that long," is, you know, I'm sure the Europeans are not impressed, because they have colleges that are 1,000 years old, but, but I find it impressive, and I'm glad to be a part of it. So, and, and, you know, I, I'm, you know, excited about the idea of, of having you on board. I did read through, through the resume here, it says that you have, you have to apologize, I have to accept my apologies, my, my, your handwriting is very legible, but my ability to read other people's handwriting is not that, that strong, but I do see film school.
Yeah.
And, and I kind of want to have an idea of like, you know, what your experience with the arts are. Obviously, music and arts and entertainment are something that Stoughton has a long history of, especially, more than anything else, music. But, but, you know, visual arts, there's also a strong history of us here as well. I'd just like to hear, you know, a little bit about your experience and things you've done.
Okay, well, I started right out of high school doing film as a hobby. I got really into it 10 years later. Well, I started my own company, and I filmed around the city. I did everything from rap videos to, to presentations, I filmed parties. And then I end up going to school 10 years later, got accepted to go to a CDIA, and it's a BU program in Waltham. It kind of upgraded me to do more movies and documentaries. And I did that for a while alongside working in the car business, and, you know, everywhere I go, I attach that type of talent. You know, I try to, at least, to whatever I'm doing. And, you know, the film is, I'm very passionate about it. I'm more geared towards doing documentaries now, and kind of explaining whatever topic it is, and getting really in depth with it. And that's one of my skills. Also, doing the film work throughout the years, I've met people in different areas, and different connections, you know, that can help me in, in any situation, even when it comes to this, as far as equipment. And, you know, I just have that, that connection when it comes to the film. I feel like that part of me can, I can bring that in. And I hear a lot of this stuff going on. I did go to the SMAC building there with, I met the lady there, and I felt like, maybe in being in this kind of community, I can give her some ideas on how things can actually go. And I see a lot of people making like similar complaints or whatever, so I feel like I bring a lot to the table to kind of like, even, even correct things.
Of course, have you, this is hopefully not a bizarre question, but are you familiar with the 48-hour film festivals and film projects?
Yeah, they're all around Boston, they usually have them more in the summertime.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm familiar with people in, in, there's different ones, there's not just this Sun Festival, there's all these different other festivals, but I'm familiar with them.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I, this stood out to me is, because I've, I've always had an interest in film, just as, as a viewer, but did a little bit of studying myself in it, and I just, one of the things that stood out to me about this is how much of the work is, you know, you think it's art, but it's a lot of project management, right? There's, you know, you sort of, you have to start with pre-production, go through production, post-production, all of these things are happening simultaneously, you have a lot of people, you have vendors that are coming in at different times, and, and so managing projects like that, to that level, is, is, you know, almost like an Olympic sport in filmmaking. And so when I saw that, that really intrigued me, because, you know, if you're able to kind of pull that off, then I think that's the kind of, that, that level of, of management of a project could really help the 300 anniversary.
Yeah, that's one of the things, too, because being, be going to school, I was able to, to learn how to conduct in a setting, a film setting, where there's, there's so many different parts. And it's not easy to be a director, assistant director, to be able to time whoever should go first, or what should be done. So I'm really good at that. I figured that out, not only the film, that's something about my character, who I am, how I sort out things. And I feel like that's something that, again, I brought that same ability to the car business, but there's a lot of people, and you're able to sort out what is what, and I feel like I'm really good at it, and when it comes to a town, this would be something I could put on my resume and say, you know, "I dealt with this much people, I was able to put in my input to organize whatever is, needs to be organized."
Well, Mr. Santos, thank you very, again, for applying, and thank you very much for answering my questions, it's definitely been a pleasure meeting you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Not a question, just a comment.
Sure, Mr. Gito.
I guess I'm, I'm at the same point I was the last time that we, we discussed this, and I thought we walked away thinking that perhaps the committee that we had would be able to figure out what other skills they wanted to have to help, to help the whole committee. I, I don't know what those skills are, I don't know what the, what the mix would be like, and I feel a little bit uncomfortable in trying to say, "Oh, well, this is the next person to put on the committee." I would suggest that, that the person, that Mr. Santos, talk with the other members of the committee, and find out what, what skills he might bring that, that are not already there, and how they could work together, as opposed to just putting him on the committee. If he were one of the first people to walk in the door, that might be another thing. But, you know, when you're putting together a group, you really need to think about how the whole group is going to work together. And so that's, I guess, where I am on this. It's not, nothing, nothing about the, the qualifications of, of Mr. Santos, it's more related to how is everybody going to be able to work together, and are you getting what you need?
Thank you, Mr. Gito. I would like to recognize Ms. Walsh, and then I have a comment, some feedback in that specific regard, Mr. Gito. Yes, Ms. Walsh, please approach, and your name and address.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I guess I'm the acting chair of the 300th Committee. We haven't even had an opportunity to, to get organized yet. We're having trouble getting everyone in the same place. But as to the applicant, I'm not so much concerned with his skills as I am with having a balanced committee. Right now, the committee's more white than the Town of Stoughton is. Two of us are in our 70s. We need some young blood, some enthusiasm, someone who could walk across this room without a cane. So please, he came to the last meeting, you didn't even realize he wasn't part of the committee. We need as broad a spectrum, ethically, racially, sexually, whatever. Age-wise, we've got, I think, one person on the committee that has any school-aged children. I want some diversity of all kinds. And being white, a woman in 75, that's not particularly diverse. So please, if someone raises their hand and says, "I want to help," take their hand.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh.
I appreciate that.
My comments had nothing to do with race or any other thing, so I hope that the, the loud voice may have sort of implied that. Hearing Ms. Walsh and her, and her views on, on just having people there, I have no problem, and I, I got as much as I need to, to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gito, and I hope that... Thank you, Mr. Gito, and I hope that you will decide that you are in support if we decide.
I did say that.
Okay. I do want to also add for the record that the reason we found out that you had not been appointed, we thought you had, and other members of, even though they have not organized yet, they did call various people like Ms. Wilson, like myself, and they wanted you. We want you. I want you.
Appreciate it.
So, is there a motion? I'm open to a-
Motion to approve the applicant.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you so much. Moving right along, a motion to open the warrant, Vice Chair Cavey. Do you think that's next in line?
Yeah, let's see. So, we do have a copy of the warrant, or a draft copy of the warrant. I don't mind jumping right in. Motion to open the, open up the annual town warrant for 2000, the fiscal year, was it 2024?
And can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That's a unanimous decision. As I was reviewing some of the warrant articles, I saw that they were challenged. So, if you agree, we will go through each of them at our, at our next meeting, which will likely be February 7th unless someone objects.
No, I'm all for that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I did, unless I missed it, I think there was an article that I wanted to get included in here that's not currently in here.
That's one of the ones that we missed, yeah. So, it's not complete.
Okay.
Madam Chair, there's at least two or three that need to be added before our discussion next, next week.
Thank you very much. All right. So, did we need a motion on that to delay it or we just come to consensus and that's agreement? All right. Okay, consensus and that's will, that's how it will be. Moving right along to our next, so we opened, we took a vote on, it's open. We go on to item number eight, reconsideration of prior vote on the requirement placement on Stoughton Youth Baseball application to CPC. This had, oh, Vice Chair Cavey, did you want to take the lead on that? It had to do with the requirement that the league come back to the select board on an annual basis to get approval to turn the lights on.
Yes, ma'am. So, included with our package, and I really have to single Lena out for having found the minutes. I, you found the minutes that, where this was actually discussed from May 24th. I sincerely appreciate that. For some reason, I remember it happening much later in the year, so I would have been driving, you know, diving through these things forever. So, thank you very much for finding these. But if you notice on page four, going into page five is our discussion within these minutes of Stoughton Youth Baseball's request. They wanted to submit a application to CPC that at the very end of that discussion, which I think you'll see on page six, ultimately, a motion was made to approve that request with an amendment that, that requests permission be annually submitted by April 1st. So, they would have to come to us, to come to the select board. Stoughton Youth Baseball would have to come to us every year by April 1st and request permission to turn the lights on. At the time, you know, I didn't feel strongly about it, but I certainly wasn't going to vote against it because I wanted the entire package, the application to go forward. What I've since discovered is a somewhat unintended consequence of this, I believe, I believe it's unintended, is that the CPC, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, we do have the Chair of CPC here. Please feel free to correct me if I say anything that's incorrect here. But my understanding is that though the CPC did vote for the application, ultimately, it did pass. There was one, at least one vote against, and more importantly, there was, was discussion of concern that, that financing the, these lights with the possibility that the select board may never turn them on because they would come to us on April 1st and we, as a board, could choose, no, you're not allowed to turn them on, for whatever reason, that there was a concern that bringing that to town meeting and having the town pay for something that may have no potential use in the real world, isn't the best use of CPC funds. It just, it puts into, I think, into question the viability of this project in a way that I think was not intended. I personally do not want Stoughton Youth Baseball to show up at the floor of town meeting to have to defend this, to have to persuade them that the select board will probably turn them on. I don't think it was a critical part of the vote, and so I did ask for a reconsideration of this, that, just that one specific requirement, that they come annually to request permission from the select board. And so I would like to reconsider just that one component. I believe that-
Second.
That we've, the vote is, my motion is that we remove that requirement.
I thought that you, okay, yes, I agree with you. I, I thought that you were making the motion to reconsider first and then-
Let's start with, let's start with the beginning.
And I agree with, with that motion and I agree with the one that one of us is going to make to, to remove that.
Okay.
I also had the same view. It didn't seem like it was necessary to have that in there, but it was, it didn't seem like it would be harmful. But I can see, as you suggested, that there are unintended consequences. And I believe the Chairman of the CPC recognized that as well, so. So, that's, the motion was on reconsideration. I made, seconded that. Do we have to vote on that and then vote on what we're going to reconsider?
Yes, because that's the motion on the table. Vote for reconsideration.
Aye.
Has been, has been seconded and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. And I vote aye as well to reconsider. The next motion?
Yeah, so I don't think, I think I've spilled all of my, my arguments out. I think there's no reason to go further. But I do move that we remove that requirement that Stoughton Youth Baseball-
Second.
-come to the select board annually to request that the lights be turned on.
Okay. The motion has, and has been seconded, and now for discussion. The reason, let's talk about, oh, Mr. Carrera, because I want to talk about the reason we initially put it in and what, I don't know if CPC, even if we do remove the language, will CPC have time to have another meeting so they can or consider changing their decision on their vote before town meeting?
Well, they've already voted in favor.
But you're trying to get unanimous decision on the CPC side as well, right?
Well, my goal is that the, that the members of town meeting not really necessarily be presented with this as a, as a problem. I don't think that it's necessary for them to, to concern themselves with whether or not the select board will or will not turn the lights on. We just simply remove that and, and that's no longer an item of consideration.
Okay. Mr. Carrera? On the motion?
The wording, the wording that, that we're going to remove was what I asked for to be put in there, to protect the residents in that area. Now, it's just like, who cares about them? Because it's going to go into the, go into the lease and there's a broker deal here so that we'll save you. Nobody said we were going to tell them they can't turn the lights off. It was to find out if there was disturbance, lights after a certain time. Now, there's no teeth to nothing. We sat here and we wouldn't let light, money be spent in the downtown because it was a private corporation. We couldn't give town money to that. So, now we have the youth commission involved so that it'll make CPC funds okay to give to a private nonprofit corporation that's got a lease with the town. And now we're going to take and throw away any kind of teeth we have in protecting the residents in that area, which there weren't supposed to be any lights, that that baseball was supposed to stop at a certain time. I'm not against Little League. I was part of it. We played our games. If they got too dark, oh, well. So, now it's a different generation. They want lights. They weren't supposed to have alcohol, they got alcohol. So, if you want to, you know, not protect the residents in there and just, hey, we'll go. Nobody said that we were going to make them beg to have their lights turned on. It was strictly to come and give us an update in a report on how things went, were there any complaints. It gave the residents someplace to come and say, hey, they weren't shutting the lights down to 11:30. They were in the parking lots whooping it up and drinking. Do what you will. Just because CPC wants a letter of commitment, they've already committed. Who cares? They gave them the money. Who cares? Give the residents something to stand on. You might as well throw the lease away if you're not going to even protect anybody. That's what things are for. Nobody said anything about turning their lights off or not turning them on. No way, I guarantee you. We had people in here who were concerned about things and we still voted for it. They had their stuff together, they went around, there wasn't enough people here to turn my mind around. But there should be an avenue for the residents of this town that live down there if somebody moved in because the looms, they get out of there. I played on many a fields where the looms people complained and they still keep going.
Well, let me ask this question. Mr. Vice Chair Cavey, your motion is to change only the language that says they have to come back to the board on an annual basis. Is that correct? But they still have to turn the lights off at the same time.
Yeah, that doesn't change. What they, what they were-
Because I could fuse like-
Yeah, the amendment was that they, they have to come to the select board for permission to turn them on. Now, just, just to remind everybody the context, this is only for playoff games during a very short period of time. I think it's like once or twice a week for like two or three weeks. So, this isn't, you know, this, you know, and it's for a field that's set, most set off in the road. It's quite a distance from, from any of butters. I think we even got a chance to see, you know, a study provided by the applicants that showed that, that there, almost no light would be actually reaching outside of the area of the field.
We never got an engineered plan that the town engineer asked for, a stamped plan. Never got it. We had people here that don't build lights.
Madam Chair, I've got the floor.
Passing it.
Well, Vice Chair Cavey, you have the floor.
Well, I just want the information to be word for word and verbatim is what we discussed. And if you don't believe me, go back, the town engineer.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Carrera. I wanted Vice Chair Cavey to complete his thought process and then Mr. Gito asked for the floor. So, I wanted to give everyone equal time to express their questions, comments, and because it's getting a little confusing.
Yeah. So, that was the context of this vote. And, and at the time, as I mentioned, your request was at it. I didn't think it was unreasonable. I didn't think you'd have any negative consequences. But I, but at this point, I just don't find it conscientious to require that Stoughton Youth Baseball go to town meeting and have to answer to this. And I don't think, I don't care enough about having them come to us for permission to be concerned about it. I think that there are plenty of remedies the town has at our disposal if, if issues were to arise. But we have, you know, this is, I don't think that we have to protect the town residents against the laughter of children as they play youth baseball and that they might have the lights on until 10 o'clock. I just don't, for only a couple of nights during the summer. So, I, to me, it's not worth the, the trouble that it puts them through. I just don't care enough about the restriction.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Cavey. Mr. Gito?
We are the owners of that property. We have a leasing and that leasing has some standards that it's supposed to live up to. If the person does not do that or the leasing does not do that, then I think that we should be able to, to deal with that. I don't think that we need to have the person come in every week. We could invite the citizens to, to complain if they want to do that or at least give their, their views on how things are working. Or we could just listen to what people have to say. I don't think that, that we need to have someone come in annually for that. And, I mean, respectfully, as I said before, I didn't see the pros and cons of that. And it would seem to me that, that we have the protection we need. So, that's where I am.
So, there are various avenues and resources if the residents, the comments, they want to approach us because they have concerns. So, do they, so then I want to also give Mr. Carrera the floor because that's where I'm leaning. There are many different avenues to let us know so we can rescind a decision. But, Mr. Carrera, what are you, what are your thoughts?
More than call for the vote.
Okay.
It's all set.
Okay. So, there's a motion on the floor and it has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. And I vote aye as well. So, please let the records reflect of three yes, one no, one absent. Thank you. Moving to the next item on our agenda is item number nine, policy regarding use of flagpole. So, currently, we do not have a flagpole policy. So, the first question is, do you want to have a flagpole policy? And then if the question is yes, I presented working with our town council, Mr. Winter, we have two options. We have one policy that just completely prohibits a flagpole on our, our town policy. And the second version is we have a flagpole policy with restrictions. But first at hand, do you want to prohibit our citizens of our towns from having a flagpole on town-owned property? If that answer is yes, then we take the vote on the flagpole policy that's listed as prohibited. To start the discussions, I lend to Vice Chair Cavey.
Sure, just to, and I, I want to make sure I understand, you know, the discussions. If I, if I say something that's incorrect, please, please correct me. But I think the, the issue at hand is, is the use of private flags on a, on a town-owned flagpole. And whether, I know this is, this has come up at the state level, made its way all the way to the Supreme Court and, you know, I think in a way that, I'll speak for myself, I did not anticipate the result of the Supreme Court. But I think that, that where, where they ended up was not irrational, where, where with a, if, if a town or a community decides, actually, we're lucky to have an attorney here, correct me if I'm wrong here, but my understanding is that if, in the absence of a policy, if you allow anybody to put up a flag, then you pretty much have to allow everybody to. But, but the Supreme Court, as I understand it, does allow you to, to establish a policy and then you're allowed to use that policy and so long as that's followed, the town is more or less protected against some of the issues that the Supreme Court was identifying. Am I way off on that or is that, that, am I in the ballpark? So that- Madam Chair, with your permission, may I-
Madam Chair, with your permission, may I respond?
Yes.
And do my best to kind of characterize the question here. So, yes, the question is, is whether or not the town should have a policy to allow private parties, third parties, non-Stoughton municipal parties to allow access to the town's hall flagpole. So that's the issue. And what you're getting at on the sort of second point is, you know, we're talking about free speech here. So, you know, where are the lines and what do they mean? So, the case you're referring to is the, the Boston case that made it up to the U.S. Supreme Court. That's the Shertliff case. It didn't necessarily create new law, but it's certainly the latest word on this First Amendment issue. And so you, I think, pretty well captured the three broad categories. So there's a public forum, and that comes with equal time to any point of view, any message, right? Cause you can't regulate content. So if you create a public forum, and that means you give access to all comers, equal access, you're gonna have to do just that. So now you peel it back one more level, government speech. If it's government messaging, controlled and directed and owned by the town of Stoughton, by the government, you have more control. It's your message. It's when the town speaks for itself. So you have an amount of control over that. That's not a public forum. And then, of course, the last prong is no. It's the town's flagpole, and the town's gonna decide what happens to it and when it happens, and that's it. No third parties will be involved. So no is a fine answer. I'm not a policymaker, so it's up to this board to debate the, the policy elements of this. But no is a fine answer, and a lot of towns will just say, no, it's the town's flagpole, and the town will decide. The second option is sort of the middle ground, right? There could be an application. There's a review process by this board, but the board would have to decide if that's the message the town wants to endorse, is that the town of Stoughton's message. So that's the government speech part, and that's what allows you, even under the Shertliff case, to have an amount of control over what message goes up, what flag goes up, or what symbol goes up. And then, of course, if you have no policy, that's, and you allow people to use it, that's where Boston ran into trouble and why we have a case on this point, because they literally said that they wanted to give access to a public forum for anyone who wanted to use it, and that means exactly what it says.
Yeah. Uh, thank, Mr. Winter, thank you very much for, for helping, saying what, that's pretty much what I was gonna say.
You did say that.
No, but it was, it was really helpful. So, you know, the, my understanding of, of the question at hand, you know, either we essentially allow no access to the flagpole, it's gonna be the American flag, and the, the, I think we have P W M I A flag, and that's it, or are we gonna come up with some sort of a policy to, to allow other people to, to fly different flags? You know, I, over the years, I, I've been approached from organizations looking to put up flags and, and have asked me to do this. The timing of it has always been such that we have not been able to address it. It's like the night before they wanted to do it, they would ask, can we do it? It's not like, well, we've gotta have a select board meeting, and so I'm gonna have to say no, because we don't have time to do it. That's a coincidence. I think in the future, that's not gonna happen. I think there'll be people coming up ahead of time, and I'd like to be able to provide them with some sort of guidance. Personally, there are messages that, that I support fully, that I would love to be able to see the town, you know, show support for. And so, you know, my, I'll speak for myself. My own view is that I would prefer to have some sort of a policy. I'd like to protect the town from just allowing anybody who has any idea to throw up a flag that represents an ideology that I'm, you know, I and most of us might find abhorrent, but we have set ourselves in a position where we are required to fly their flag. I think limiting it to only, only the one flag or only the two flags as it currently stands, you know, I, I think that, I think we, as a welcoming community, to bring that up again, I think that's not the message that, that we, that doesn't really represent, you know, who we are and what we've done. I think that, that we, you know, we do stick our necks out for people. I think we do, you know, speak for people who, and we, we want them to, to share with messages of hope and love. So personally, I'd prefer to have some sort of policy that allows those kinds of messages. But I'm, as I said, only one member here.
Mr. Gito?
Um, I really think it's very difficult for this board to determine what the people in the town want. It's very nice that, that we have five members on the board this time. Two years from now, we might have five different members, may have different views. I would suggest that we not have flags from different groups that we agree with or don't agree with on the, on the town flagpoles. There are probably 15,000 lots in this town, and people can put signs, whatever signs they want, I believe, or there may be some restrictions, but not very many, that people can put up on their lawns. And people can put up pros and cons. And I guess I'm not really interested in the Board of Selectmen taking sides on those issues. I don't think that it's terribly helpful. I think it's divisive. It's, it certainly does express an interest. We can express that interest through our actions. We can express our interest through our discussions as a board and as a community. But I don't think that we need to get into the issue of whether or not someone's flag goes up on the town flagpole. So I would opt for the first policy, nothing. Not because I might not have views, because I have views just like all the rest of us do. But I don't want my view to, in some cases, make someone else unhappy when there are other avenues for them to be able to express their views, pro or con.
Comment, Mr. Carrera? No comment? And my take is, I would like to have a policy so we can go through a process, and everyone knows that we are a welcoming community, and we have an area where the flag can go. Because we are welcoming, and that is a demonstration of that welcoming community. I have been approached in the past, but we didn't have a policy, and funny that you would say that. They waited until the last day, like the, the day before, and, and I said, well, I can't give an answer, because I am one member of five, so that's insufficient time. And they asked me, well, what is the policy so we can prepare for the next time? And if we did adhere to, let's say, option two, it gives some guidance and framework. And this is not etched in stone. It's not a policy in infinity. We can change it as well. Other communities are experiencing the same thing that we are. So I vote on having a policy just as a start and a framework, so everyone knows, well, this is the policy, and these are our thoughts, and it is government speech. And we represent the community.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
I vote for no.
No.
Like Mr. Gito said, we don't, I don't think we need. We welcome people in various ways. We stand here and salute that flag. What, what's gonna be next? That something else up there? And I live in America. I was taught at an early age, we used to say Pledge of Allegiance and sing My Country, Tears of Thee. Now I don't think any of that goes on in the schools. Maybe they could tell me, but I, I don't know. But they make a big deal out of everything. There's a lot of veterans that voted, that fought and died for that. If people wanna put something on their lawn, be it. I ain't gonna say nothing about it. They're welcome to it. But I don't, I don't think this board should be making those kind of decisions. We welcome people here. We, we love to see them. They open businesses. That's the way it should be. But that flagpole's that flagpole. It's all I have. It's all I care about.
So we have two in favor of?
We have, we have a motion. We don't have, do we have a second?
He's seconded. No second? I thought Mr. Gito's second, I'm sorry.
I haven't done it yet.
Okay. So what is the motion then? Because I misunderstood.
Steve, Brian, when I said we had three things, free speech, governance, speech, government.
I will second, I will second Mr. Carrera's motion. I did not second it, I don't believe, but I will.
Okay. And Mr. Carrera is option number one. That is the flagpole policy which is, says prohibited, and it reads, "The private use of town hall flagpoles and/or use of any and all surrounding and/or publicly accessible spaces proximate to those flagpoles is strictly prohibited. Town hall flagpoles may only be used for official town of Stoughton business. This policy shall not apply to or alter any other existing policies for the private use of other town of Stoughton property and/or facilities." That's your vote.
I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, when, when the Portuguese sister community came over from, from Portugal, they were kind enough, they flew that flag, but they flew it underneath the American flag. So that, to me, is the way it is. I, other, other, it just, I don't wanna get into that, that part of it. It's, it's very simple. So that's my motion, that the one you read.
And that's Mr. Gito's. When you said that, Mr. Carrera, it just led me to believe that it is, on one flagpole, the American flag, U.S. of America flag, then the Veterans' flag, the MIA flag, and then it could be some other flag, right? Is that what you're saying? Or it, it would be a separate flagpole altogether?
No.
It's our two, and then another flagpole would be something else that is approved? Is that?
Another?
Like, we get, we get a second flagpole, third flagpole, whatever, on another designated place?
We have one flagpole. That's all, I mean, if they wanna put a flagpole in another property area or something like that, and.
That's non-owned by town.
That's not on town, that's the way they can do it.
Okay. And that's a?
That, and that's my second. And I've seen flags flown in, in people's yards from Canada and the United States and any other.
The Ukraine seems to be a big flag right now.
Right, right.
I mean, what people want to do is what they want to do.
Okay. Vice Chair Cavie?
All right. I think we, we can vote on, on, on having the prohibitive policy.
Okay. So we will state that that is the motion. Vote on, the vote, the motion on the table is vote in favor of the prohibited flagpole policy. That is the motion that was seconded. So all in favor, and let's poll. Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavie?
No.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote no. So we have two to two. So I recommend that we table this, and, I'm sorry, there were two to two, so.
Did that motion pass?
That motion didn't, cause it, it was a tie, right? So I recommend that we table the discussion to another time, and we have a fuller discussion on what are our next steps, or if there are any, because it didn't pass.
You don't have to, you don't have to table it. You can just bring it up at another time.
Okay.
I think having a fifth member, a tiebreaker, I think one way or the other will help, help us. So, yes, next agenda that you'd like to put it on, I, I support, you know, giving you the decision of where to, when to bring it up next.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Calder, did you have something else?
No, I just concur. A tie vote means the motion doesn't carry.
Okay.
But you are free to bring it up on a future agenda, when we have a full board.
Thank you very much, and that's what we will do. Moving right along to our next agenda item, which is number 10, all alcohol beverage license. This is the proposal for variants. A little background, when we initially drafted and voted on this all alcohol beverage license, it was to offer our all alcohol license to only those businesses that are in the business of selling, like a restaurant, selling food and, and alcohol. One of our, one of our business owners did approach us, but this is not for the benefit of one. It is to see if the board would like to reconsider the policy as it stands now to include the language of a variance. That means allow sometimes, or I have the wording for that variance right now. And then, once I state, we can have a discussion. If we do, oh, let me just stop there. Do we wanna entertain a variance? And then we talk about the language. I was getting a little ahead of myself.
I support that. Yeah, to the extent that it helps us have a discussion, I'll just make a motion that we, that we, that we entertain amendment to our alcohol, all alcohol beverage license that would allow waivers for professional establishments.
Okay. So that motion was made, and it was seconded, and let's take a vote on it.
Who seconded?
Mr. Carrera.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to poll it?
This is just a motion to entertain.
Just to entertain them. So that, Mr. Carrera, I'm gonna poll them. Yes? Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
What is the, we're not discussing this, or we are discussing it?
This vote, this, the motion on the table is to allow us to discuss it.
Thank you. I.
If, if no one wanted to.
Okay, I, I, I thought we were somewhere else. I, I thought that the vote wa, the motion was to accept the amendment, but not, that wasn't it? Okay. I, sure, why not discuss it?
Yes. And I vote in favor of discussion as well. So now that we have gone to the next step, the variants, working with our town attorney, Mr. Attorney Winter, the language is, if someone can see this, let me, this little writing, it's a little small.
That's a page.
Oh, it's in this package? Yeah, thank you. Okay, great, thanks. Oh, this is much better. "Notwithstanding any of the above requirements, the board may, in its sole uncontestable discretion, grant waivers in full or in part to any of the above local standards upon proper application and after a public hearing to a professional establishment, which is not a restaurant, nightclub, tavern, private club, music, or entertaining venue, or similar business, provided that any such waiver does not conflict with state law and that the applicant demonstrates such waivers are in the public interest. All regulations, not specifically waived, shall remain applicable, and any applicant establishment establishment requesting such waivers shall specify which specific waivers are sought and the reason thereof. Any such applicant shall be required to adhere to and comply with these regulations. Notwithstanding any such waivers applied for or granted, to the extent applicable, in granting any such waivers, the board may impose reasonable conditions, as it may determine are necessary and/or warranted in light of the nature of the waiver." That's the proposed language. Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. Discussion? Mr. Carrara?
When we, when we give out a waiver, how are we gonna, um, put a price on, on what it, what it's gonna cost? Like, are they gonna apply for all alcohol? Are they gonna buy beer and wine? Are we gonna allow them to do something different? Is there gonna be a spot for a waiver cost? Or is it gonna fall the, the, you know what I mean?
It, it's complicated. I think that's something we need to decide, uh, on an individual basis, because by its very nature, this waiver is, uh...
The waiver, to me, like you, like you say, the waiver should be worth something. You know what I mean? It's not a standard license, it's something, there should be like a price for, you know, a waiver or something like that, or...
Vice Chair Cavey?
I think the, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to be stand corrected, but the license would be the same, the question is whether or not the, it adheres to our policies. And the waiver is that we're waiving certain aspects of our policies that, that we're saying are required, because we see something about a, a specific business that maybe doesn't quite fit the mold in a way that, you know, our policy doesn't capture. Uh, I know, Mr. Calder, you've worked a lot on this question, so if I say something that is, is off topic, let me know. But, um, you know, we do have a specific, it happened so quickly, like practically right after we set our policies, we had a, an example of a business that, uh, you know, just seems to really fit within the kinds of things that we want to have in our community. And they do want to sell alcohol, um, but they don't fit into our policy. And, and so, the fact that they, they don't fit our policy, um, you know, I can't help but think, well, maybe our policy's wrong. Like, maybe, maybe we need some sort of a release valve for, for this particular kind of business. You know, our goals with, with this policy were to, were to establish some, some ground rules about who gets to sell alcohol within our town, um, and the kinds of businesses we want here. And our goal was really, you know, thinking along the lines of, not to put any words in anybody's mouth, or just make it overly simplify it, but we don't want, you know, we don't want a lot of nightclubs. We want to have restaurants and family establishments, and we want them to be able to make profit off of alcohol, but we don't want this, that to be like the sole purpose for their existence. We want them to be, uh, really just part of the community and have ultimately a positive impact on the community. And so, our thinking, I believe, was really geared towards, um, you know, preventing those kinds of nightclubs, and, and so we, we thought, well, if it's not a nightclub, they'd be selling food, they'd be doing all these other things, and that our policies sort of fit, fit people into that mold. And a business comes along immediately that doesn't fit the schema that we developed, but it does seem, by all other measures, you know, perfectly wholesome, and they seem like they, they, the thing they're trying to do in the community is, uh, a very positive thing for our community. And so, what I would like to see is, personally, is to offer, you know, these cases that are somewhat extraordinary, a little bit, you know, different than, 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 um, the everyday examples, uh, still have an opportunity to be able to, to, you know, function as a business in order to, and make a profit off of the sale of alcohol, uh, the sales of alcohol. I would certainly want to, you know, ask a lot of questions to make sure that, you know, nothing's gonna get out of hand, if this, if the groups are gonna be large, to make sure there's a police detail, all those kinds of things, uh, that we may not otherwise ask a, a restaurant to do, uh, but isn't quite a nightclub. And so I think we, um, just to kind of circle back around to where I started, the, the waiver is a waiver for our policy, not a waiver for the license. Ultimately, their license will be the one that, uh, you know, it was ABBCC like agrees with, and they'll have all the rights and privileges, uh, that's granted. If anybody knows any, has any information that contradicts that, please let me know, but that's my understanding.
I'll turn my attention over to Attorney Winter. Please share your insight, um, and on top of that, my additional question is, if a business is non-specific to a restaurant or a tavern that sells alcohol, why not just allow them to have one-day license? I know there's a limited, a limit, um, of like thirty per year or some period of time, so why wouldn't a business go in that direction and that keeps our policy intact? Which means no waiver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to respond to some of the comments I just heard. Let me just back up for a second, if I could though, and maybe just explain that, um, as drafted with this amendment, the, the fee, the application process, none of that changes. And so, you have a fee schedule, and so that fee schedule's intact, the application process, that's intact. This provision, if the board voted to adopt it, would only add the authority of this board to consider essentially waivers from your existing regulations. So that's the only sort of new part to the scheme that you already have. So, just to answer what Mr. Carrera was sort of raising, you know, how far does this reach, you know, and what other implications are, are there for this? So, ninety-nine percent of what you already have on the book would be intact. It would just give you an authority that you don't already have, and that's to, sort of surgically, um, on an application and on a hearing on the merits, waive particular provisions of your regulations if you saw fit to. So that's, that's the only thing that would change if you were to adopt this. Now, the considerations that you may want to discuss amongst yourselves as you work your way through this are, um, you only have a certain amount of licenses, right? So you have a quota. And I can't remember what the number is now, is it however many we have left right now, but three, is it?
Excuse me, Lena, you, I just don't recall that number right now, because some non-renewed, so we had a total of seven? Was it five or seven? Yeah, five. Let's go with that number, five. Seven, because two non-renewed, okay.
So, the point being that for every license that would go to someone who got a variance or a waiver, that would be one less available for someone who did comply with your regulations. So, I'm not putting my thumb on either side of the scale with that comment, just that that's something you should consider. The other, sort of countervailing point is, certain businesses would be eligible for what we call a special license or a one-day license, but as your chair referenced, there's a, an annual cap on that. So in the aggregate, you can only have thirty days under a one-day license. So that may work terrifically for one business and not at all for another. And where you have sort of a nascent business, a new business, they might not even know. And so in some cases, if you have maybe a one-off event a couple times a year, it's perfect, they'd never need an annual license. But if somebody is, by design, by model, looking at a business that maybe does forty-five, fifty, sixty, well, that thirty-day license isn't gonna work, or the, the maximum of thirty-one day licenses isn't gonna work. So they, they sort of get caught in between both worlds under your regulations. They don't have the food services, and they don't have the other things that would make them eligible for the annual license, uh, but at the same time, thirty-one day licenses would be problematic for their, their business model too. So this would be sort of a, a very narrow bandwidth carve-out in order to address that particular need. And, you know, I mean, again, I'm not behind the policy considerations here, but I did draft this. And one thing I'll point out to you is that I tried to make it clear that, in order to be eligible, not to get a waiver, but just to even be eligible to apply for one, you'd have to be a professional establishment that is not. And then I listed out a number of businesses. So those are the businesses that really should be applying for an annual license. You know, your taverns, your restaurants, and the other people who should qualify under all your other provisions. So you wouldn't even be eligible to ask for a waiver if you were a family restaurant, for example. So this, I, I tried to capture only a very narrow bandwidth with this, um, so that you're, you're inclusive enough to catch what you want, but not over-inclusive, so that you sort of undermine your own, uh, regulations in the first place. So I hope that explains enough to get your conversation to the next step here.
Yes. Oh, Mr. Calder, sorry.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak to this. I'll always remember this case, because it was the first thing that came to my desk on the first hour of the first day as your town manager, so I'll always remember it. One of the rules of thumb in doing legislation, and it also applies to creating policies, is to do no harm. And the second is to avoid any unintentional consequences. I won't speak to the specific applicant, because that's not on the agenda for this meeting. But I have, I have seen instances where the well-intended and well-written policy, uh, kind of supersedes what I was told was the intent of the policy. And we can speak to that at another time, I guess. Some of the issues that have come up is what happens when we have a business that, where the primary purpose is not to sell alcohol, it's something else. But serving alcohol is a secondary or supplemental service they provide. I know from the briefings I've received from board members that that was not the intent of this, of this policy. But yet, this business and other businesses potentially could get caught up in this policy. So, the, the reason I support, not that I have a vote, a variance, is so when the board is presented with a case that represents, uh, a different perspective, a different opportunity, a different type of business, that that applicant not be caught up in a policy that did not anticipate that type of business. I know the intent of the policy, I think it's brilliant, but I don't think in some cases it's going to apply, so I think the executive branch of this town should have the right to, to, uh, give variances for situations that were not intended in the original scope of the policy. And I think this does this very effectively. There are some very good businesses that could come to town, that would get caught up in this policy, and that could take advantage of unused licenses, that would bring great dignity and honor to this town. But they may get caught up in the, in the scope of this policy and be not be able to do it. I think it should be the discretion of the Board of Selectmen to decide when those cases exist and how they want to handle those cases. So I would, from your, from my perspective as your town manager, I, I strongly support this variance language, and I strongly support the board having the authority and the, in the pathway to, to support, uh, to issue a variance when that business does not represent the types of concerns that made this policy necessary in the first place. Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Calder. Mr. Gito?
Yes. What's a professional establishment?
A professional establishment? I don't have a, a clean, from a business perspective, from a legal professional.
Any business that is not a restaurant, nightclub, tavern, private club, music, or entertainment venue, or similar business.
So, a, um, gas station? Would be a professional establishment?
Or a law office?
Or a law office. I'm just, just asking the question. We could go any number of places from there, but I'm not really interested in doing that. I guess my view on this is that the licenses that are issued to a community and then out have a couple of components to them. One is that the licensee owns the license and sells it, transfers it, and so on. If it's a tavern or a restaurant, it sells to those people. I don't know what a professional establishment does with a license. Does it sell it to another professional establishment? Does it give it back to the town? If it does transfer it to another establishment, then does the, the board, uh, have to accept that, uh, transfer? I don't know. Maybe someone does. But let me continue, if, if I might. The other component of this that, that interests me is what, what is the purpose of these liquor licenses? It seems to me that it is to provide, uh, venues for people that are in business to support the community, not to support themselves, but to provide a venue for, for others to come and have a drink, have dinner and a drink, have whatever, and, and to, to be entertained in a way that is respectful. But, but that, those places are opened to everyone of age and so on. They are not clients or people who, uh, only have a venue for a short period of time. Most of those other establishments have meeting rooms and so on, where people can come and do their business, as well as, as having a, an establishment there that's a more permanent and available to everyone. So I guess it's the, it's the, what's the purpose of that? Also, the other part of it, which, which was alluded to by the, by our attorney, was that there are only a certain number of them available. And so, each one we give out that has a special purpose, maybe a few hours a day, a few hours a week, a few hours a month, whatever that might be, and is a secondary activity on a, on a primary business, which is not providing entertainment to the entire community, but maybe only a very small subset of the community. That takes away from another establishment being able to provide that, that more fulsome experience. And I guess I would view it as being a benefit to, to a particular establishment, maybe one of several, if, if we were to choose gas stations, for instance. Probably a bad choice, quite frankly, because you'd probably get thrown in jail at the end of the day, but, but, but just, just picking it. That would mean that one gas station would be providing liquor to their, to the people that come in, and another one wouldn't. One would think that that might provide a certain amount of benefit to one over the other. So I guess from a number of perspectives, I'm scratching my head to find out why I would do this, to provide... would do this, to provide that kind of, of support, sort of a tangential piece to a business, which we wouldn't do for a whole lot of other things. So those are the kinds of questions I have. And I'm not really eager to say yes.
Vice Chair Caven.
So this policy is relatively new. Anybody who, who had applied, you know, six months ago, wouldn't have been confronted with this problem at all, including the businesses that you described. In all of those cases, we would have gone through the same steps we go through for, for alcohol licenses. And ultimately, they would have come here and there would be some degree to which we would use our discretion and the information we received to make a judgment about whether or not this was something that fit, fit our own view of this. In lieu of a policy, it might be a little inconsistent, a little loosey-goosey, but it would be based on something, ultimately our own judgment. I think that this allows for exactly the same thing that we've, we've had for last several decades at least, maybe 100, 100-plus years, where we, we would be able to, to determine whether or not we felt, you know, a particular business's request for an alcohol license fit our own requirements. Now, we tried to, to get these, all of those requirements down as a policy in something that was very concrete and easy to follow. But I think that allowing an escape valve where people don't, maybe don't quite fit, where they are, they're finding business, businesses that, that are innovative and different than what we may anticipate, an opportunity to, to serve alcohol. I, you know, I could think of, this case is really, I think, for me, so, the particular business is such a good example of this because, I mean, we're talking about, you know, a business that would essentially allow, you know, wedding showers to occur or retirement, retirement party to happen in a venue. Those types of things, like, it could be at a restaurant, it could be someplace else, but I mean, somebody's sort of set up a, set up a, a business specifically to cater to this very, you know, this, this different way of, of getting together. They rent out the room, they would be able to provide alcohol, and I think the photography was another key component of, of their, their work where they're taking pictures of the events as well. I just don't see that that's, that, that is equivalent in any way to allowing gas stations to sell beer to people who were passing through. I think it's a very false equivalency.
Could I interrupt you just for a second? The reason that I said gas stations and wasn't trying to get into the specifics of what may be before us is to sort of separate that from the other. I mean, I understand, and I'm not trying to stop you from talking, but, but I could have chosen something else.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that it creates an abstraction that really loses the point of, of, of what we're actually looking at. And if we just say it's some abstract place and who knows and it could be anything, right? I don't think that's really true. I think that there are, that I do trust the members of the board to be able to make a determination of whether or not this fits something that we approve of, having inside the town. And, and I think that if someone came up and said, I have a law office and I'd also like to be able to, to sell, you know, martinis while I'm servicing, I think we would say that's, that's not something we support. And I, I'm not, I don't feel like that's a risk that, that, of something that could have happened. So I think the abstraction offuscatates like what we're actually talking about, which is allowing businesses that, that are, for which having, serving alcohol makes some kind of sense and isn't a risk to the community, offering them the opportunity to, to do that.
What would, what would an art museum do? Just hypothetical. What would an art museum, so art museum, they're in the business of...
Sun Paint and Margaritas.
Sun Paint and Margaritas, right? So does anyone, using, using that as an example, so people want to have weddings there, people want to have events there, but they have a lot of events throughout the year. So that is an operation that would likely meet the variance. That's, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
Madam Chair, I think that's a great example of the type of business we'd love to have in Stoughton. But they do host events because of the nature of an art museum. They would host perhaps anniversary parties, wedding parties, political fundraisers, anything like that, community events where they would bring in catering. They may not cook it there, clearly it's an art museum. They may not cook it there, in fact, they wouldn't cook it there, but they are able to set up a bar, bring in catered food, and host that event. The business we're talking about, I know we're trying to stay away from that business, fits exactly that profile. But under the current policy, they could not come to Stoughton, and they've already invested a million dollars in coming to Stoughton. And we're not trying to, me, I'm sorry. This is not trying to change your policy. It's simply, and we shouldn't be talking about one business, but the art museum is a great example. It simply affords this board to issue a variance for a business that was not anticipated or targeted under this policy. It just gives you heightened authority to do, to use your judgment.
So if we're using an art museum as an example, I love art, we would, we would say, hmm, if they do have these events and they have the weddings and all the different activities, would 30 be enough? Just using that as an example, a framework to kind of lead the discussion, then they, it would be no, 30 is insufficient. So they need that variance. And so when we are presented with, with requests, if we use that model as an example, does it meet the art museum model or something thereof? Well, that could be our litmus test. If it falls in, and we know how to say yes and we know how to say no, when people ask us for some things. It gives us the tools, right? Okay.
That was a good example. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito.
I think there are other things that we need to consider, however, in relating to what happens with that license. Does it, does it revert? Does it get passed?
Say revert.
When, when that business no longer is a business, an art museum may be there forever. Another business may be a business that stays in business for a couple of years. We know that restaurants and other establishments have a pretty short half-life. And so how do we deal with, with those issues?
I have two, attorney and...
Good.
And then I have Mr. Cora, Mr. Cora is next, and then attorney, Winner is next.
To answer Lou's question, it's very simple. If we're giving a waiver, we have every right not to allow it to be sold. You can put conditions on it this, this long, that it can't be sold, you could make them pledge it back to the, to the town, and, and then that's it.
Right, that was my thought.
I never knew we could do that.
Oh, yeah. We've had pledged licenses back to the town.
Attorney Winner, please.
So let me just start with sort of the basics. It wouldn't fundamentally operate any differently than any other liquor license. So if a business ceased to operate, the license is tied to the premises. They have to have a premises. So if they don't have a premises anymore, they can either try to transfer the license or they can surrender it. So it wouldn't be any different if it was a restaurant or, you know, some other kind of establishment. Now, the last, I think it's the last sentence in this waiver provision, which is common for any kind of variance, which is, and I like to say it this way, if you ask for extraordinary relief, then you may see some extraordinary conditions. And so we usually try to balance those competing interests, right? If you're asking us to give us something that is valuable to us, meaning like food service or something else, then we're probably going to ask you to do something in exchange in order to sort of accommodate for that public interest. So that's why that sentence is in there, because we would attach conditions to the extent lawfully possible in order to try to capture those concerns.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Cora.
Can we make a motion?
Yes, please.
I got to move on here, it's, I'm, I make a motion that we enter the, the waiver variance into the liquor policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Surprisingly, yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much. And we move to the next.
Thank you, Lou.
Yes, let's take a five-minute break, please. Thank you. Thank you.
[inaudible]
No, let me ask some questions. Well, thank you, because if I don't talk the entire time, nobody asks me to speak the whole thing. Certainly not because of my fancy ties, but specifically tonight. [inaudible]
All makes sense. There was a section, where, you want to build a motion on two things. One, that we notify the finance committee that we're changing their source. I'm going to say it, but the motion is.
[inaudible]
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Surprisingly, yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much. And we move to the next.
Thank you, Lou.
Yes, let's take a five-minute break, please. Thank you.
[inaudible]
No, let me ask some questions. Well, thank you, because if I don't talk the entire time, nobody asks me to speak the whole thing. Certainly not because of my fancy ties, but specifically tonight. [inaudible]
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimous on both of those motions.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any other business for tonight?
No.
Oh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimous. Good night, everyone, and have a nice evening.
Do you guys have a draft of that budget?
[music]